Hello everyone and welcome to the Decaturish.com forum for Stone Mountain City Council Post One. I'm your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wissenhut. We have two candidates with us today. I want to point out there are four candidates in this race, so we might have a couple join us. The candidates that are with us today are Anita Bass. Anita, how are you?
I'm excellent.
And thank you. And Councilmember Gina Cox.
So thank you for asking. How are you?
I'm good. I'm sorry you cut out and I didn't mean to.
That's okay. Very well. Thank you. How are everybody?
Great. Okay. We might, we might have to give each other a little lead time to make this work, but uh. Uh, Michael Shapak and Beverly Howard Patterson were sent invitations there in this race as well. Um, I have not seen cue, I've not seen. Uh, them jump in the queue for uh, this meeting. Hopefully they will join us. If they do, we'll let them in. Um, with that, uh, I'm gonna do our opening statements and we're gonna start with our incumbent, uh, Councilmember Cox. You have. Two minutes to make an opening statement and uh, when you get about thirty seconds into it. Uh, thirty seconds from two minutes ending. I have a very sophisticated timekeeping system. I'm gonna raise my finger like this and so you'll know, uh, grab it up. So. Uh, opening statement to member, uh, two minutes.
All right. Well, I won't, I won't go past your church finger up there, but I'm glad to be here and honored to um, be able to. Again, qualify to participate as a candidate for um, the post one at city council. Um, being a lifelong citizen there, I've seen things where um. Life was, was lively or uh, things were happening on Main Street. Um, but my community continues to remain um, active, um. Energetic about the future. Um, and everybody's trying to make sure that we all have a say in the, in the. Part and play into the city government so that we won't have a disconnect. So again, I'm, I'm honored to be a part of the race. Um, I think I bring some good qualities to it. Um, people person. Uh, putting uh, the voices of the people um. And in the mix. So everybody's not, I don't feel everybody will get everything that they want. Um. If you like red and I like blue, then we can make purple and everybody can find some happiness in um. In the, the efforts that we put forward. But again, I'm, I'm pleased to be a part to serve um, the community, the city of Stone Mountain.
Thank you. Uh, Anita Bass, uh, two minutes to make an opening statement.
Good morning, everyone. It's my honor and pleasure to be a part of this forum this morning. Um, I've been a citizen of Stone Mountain for thirty-one years. Um, I've seen all my children have gone to the schools here in Stone Mountain. All four of my children graduated from Stone Mountain High School. My husband served in the military and when he got out, we said, where we're gonna live? And we decided to come and move to Stone Mountain. During that time period, I've been really active in the community. I consider myself an uh, activator. Um, and when things are happening in the community and I say, okay, what do we need to do? As opposed to just sitting around complaining, I've been really uh, actively engaging with people in the community to get involved. If there's an issue, why are we complaining? If you see something, say something. So during my time here, uh, we've done a lot of things in the community. And my heart is a, a servant heart. I desire, and I think coming up in the community, I learned the importance of serving. Seeing my mom and my father serve people and inviting them to our homes and feed them. Uh, that was something that I didn't understand at the time. But as an adult, I understand the importance of having a connection in your community. Each person's voice is important. And I hope that if I'm elected, that I will show that, that I'll be a person of integrity, transparency and grit. Because that's what it's gonna take in order to, to move us to a new level. And I think a new wind is blowing and I think it's just opportu-
We, we lost you for seconds.
Tune in. And then a season changes. And I think there's a lot of things that are changing and I'm so excited to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we, we are having a little bit of a technical uh, issue uh, here this morning. We're gonna try to work through it. Uh, I got council members. Hold on. My apologies. Um, so we, we got council members asking for signup links. Um, so. Uh, if, if you were, yeah, it's the whole thing. Uh, we, we do the best we can. Uh, we, we, we do the best we can. Candidates and councilmembers is kinda, kinda tough. Um, so if you were watching us on Twitch, I noticed we've got a few sign-ins on Twitch. Uh, first of all, if you're candidates in other races, hang tight, we're gonna send you a Zoom link shortly. Uh, if you're signed into Twitch and you wanna ask a question, you can do that. I will check those periodically and we'll, we'll try to get to those questions if we can. Uh, Anita, starting with you, um, what would you say is Stone Mountain's greatest strength? You have two minutes.
Greatest strengths, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think the community. I think the history of Stone Mountain is his greatest strength. Of course, being here for thirty-one years, I also worked at Stone Mountain Park. So I got a chance and actually participated in the Olympics during that time period. Uh, my entire family has worked at Stone Mountain Park, except for my youngest daughter. Um, and so I think having the community connection, Sherman Town is such a vital uh, part of the community. I think that we have so much, whether it be the older community, the younger community, the new communities. I sit. As a vice chair on the Historical Preservation Committee. And so I get a chance to see a lot of people coming in, so many new young faces, so excited about this. They love that um, it's such a homely, it's, it's such a homey place and people feel connected. So I think that's our strength. The community legacy of people of all ages, being such a vibrant part of a historical city. So I think that's our strength, our community connection.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cox, same to you. Uh, two minutes. What do you think is Stone Mountain's greatest strength?
I think the diversity that is here um, is, is a big strength. Um, and I think when diversity comes, um, opinions and ideas. Um, I think that with diversity comes ages, um, different people in this, different stages of their lives. But also an opportunity for uh, that to be uh, shared to where we are today. Not just to look at, oh, it once was, but now, okay, well, we, where can we move forward? Um, without pushing the legacies that are here aside. Um, certainly, um, I am a part of the historic Sherman Town District. But we don't wanna keep be, being shined upon like we're um. Um, I guess the word would be um, the needy. We are um, a, a blend of young and old. Some of my, um, I'm fifty-four and some of my friends that I grew up with are coming back, whether it's stay with auntie or grandma and. And continue their lives on here. But as far as Stone Mountain's greatest asset, I would say the diversity. Um, different ages, people in the stages and, and ideas that are coming.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Cox, starting with you, what do you think is Stone Mountain's biggest challenge? Two minutes.
Um, overcoming some of the past and misconceptions, I think. Um. And when I say the past, history is what it is. And, and to know when I say misconceptions. That the uh, Stone Mountain Park, I think Ms. Bass just mentioned that, you know, we, we all know that history. We all know um. The, the land, the, the, the talk of the clan. I remember in eighty-seven, eighty-eight, kind of the last times that I've seen that, but. To know that we are uh, uh, people now that we, we, I have friends of, of different colors and backgrounds and so forth, but that, that shouldn't. Be just the whole story. Well, well, let's just talk about can we work together? And I think that that's some of our biggest challenges. Um, your idea is no bit, no better than mine if we can't come together and discuss it. I'm all about listening so that we can find out, all right, well, you know what? That's a really good idea. I didn't think about it from that perspective. So sometimes our challenges are not listening to the other and then finding out, why would that person feel this way? Um, and, and, and move. Or last time their idea didn't match with mine, why, why not? And it could be something that we just don't know that is underlying that. Um, impedes the, the progress. So just not listening and, and that making that connection with the one, one to the other.
Thank you. Uh, Anita Bass, same question to you. What do you think is Stone Mountain's toughest challenge right now?
Uh, you know, I think it's just being again, um, open-minded to change. Change is inevitable. You're not gonna top, stop the progression of change. Um, I've been fortunate to travel throughout. I lived in Europe. I worked at Clarkson Community Center and so I understand uh, the, the pattern of diversity in a community. And I'm also big about being able to come to a table to sit. If you're not invited to a table to talk and to discuss the differences. Then people do feel excluded, they don't feel that they're a part of. So I think that we need to really be able to go into each community. And get the voices within the community and allow them to come to the table. I know how it feels if you're not invited to a table. You have ideas and you have thoughts and you want to be a part of something and yet you're not invited. And my desire is to open up ambassadors for each community and allow them to come in so that we can um, disperse with this. Dissension and your color, race, but we are, we are different, but yet we're the same. So my thing is to opening up the doors so that us to have some dialogue in the community. Not at the city council, but go into the community. You don't live in my community. I don't live in your community. We have to get the people in the community. To have a voice and then bring those voices to the city council and then let us all make a difference.
Thank you very much. Um, Councilmember Cox, we, we had, I believe, some news that broke last night. Um, regarding Sherman Town and the Historic Preservation Commission. Do you, do you know anything? I, I think our reporter, Jaden Mason uh, was there. Uh, and I think he might have heard that from Councilmember Monroe. But uh, do you know anything regarding that? I'll, I'll get to that in the next forum if, if we don't have any information at this one.
Hmm, no, I've, I've heard a little chitter chatter, but I don't think that is enough for me to be speaking on.
Sounds good. We'll, we'll follow up on that story as well. Um, the, the, what we had heard generally was the Historic Preservation Commission had voted related to some abatements in the Sherman Town. Uh, neighborhood. So we'll, we'll try to get to the bottom of that uh, soon enough. Uh, Councilmember uh. Bass, who did we start with last time? Was it Councilmember Ba- uh, Councilmember Cox or Anita Bass?
It was Cox.
Uh, okay. Um, so uh, Anita Bass, uh, question to you. Uh, what in your opinion has prevented Stone Mountain from achieving its true potential? Two minutes.
Uh, what has prevented Stone Mountain from achieving it? You know, just really the downtown development area is crucial. Since I've lived here for thirty-one years, right? So I've seen the whole landscape of the city change. When I moved here. I mean, my family would come here to visit. We're going to Stone Mountain. We are going to the downtown. And we definitely would just trickle through and spend money and eat at the restaurants and go to the park. So I think that we, as a city, we need to really uh, put a stamp on breathing life back into the downtown. Because when you do that, you are going to create traffic into the community. You're gonna encourage new businesses. You're gonna encourage even people that live in the city that are business owners to say, you know what? I want to come there and I wanna come and, and have my business there. So we, we gotta open up some dialogue, some of those empty spaces downtown. We need to talk to some of the business owners of those properties. We need to see where is their heart. And also use the Department of Development and Authority to step in and all the different functions. We've got to talk together to see how we can make this community vibrant and alive. Tucker, Avondale. Uh, all those areas, uh, uh, Lawrenceville, all of those areas are breathing in such a capacity that why not Stone Mountain? We have the capacity to be a vibrant, loving uh, a city that people wanna come and stay, eat and live. So I think we need to really uh, check into the city development and do better in that area.
Councilmember Cox, uh, same question to you. What has prevented Stone Mountain from achieving its true potential?
All right. I had to get a little uh, electricity there.
No worries.
Okay, okay. All right. For, for my perspective. Prevent it from re- um, going into its, its true potential, lack of communication and the, the seat at the table. Um. We can say that decisions are made, but uh, oh, they put a notice up, but it, what, just the notice, oh, I, I didn't really recognize it. And somebody had to uh, verbally give a, an exchange of what was happening um, to make people feel um. Like they are a part of the decision process. Um, something else on there, when we start talking about the lack of input. Um, the ordinances, when you do have um, people want to do uh, different ideas uh, with their homes, with their businesses. The ordinances that are on the books are from the nineteen-seventies or sixties that impede the people from making the choices. So as a councilperson, that would take a deeper dive into, let's say, guys, you know what? This person wanted to do this on their property. What is wrong with that idea if it doesn't hurt the neighbor or if it doesn't hurt the community at large? And so many times I think that that's the, the issue when businesses decide to go elsewhere. Because one, they're, they're all, and I've heard this in several, several business sessions. Gosh, it's so hard to start a business because you can't do what you want to. You bring a brand new idea and, but their old rules still lie. And then you've got people that still own these uh, these uh, facilities that are not utilizing them for their full potential. So I think we all see that. That's one thing I think we all agree on, but okay, sorry, singer went up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had to do the church finger. My bad. Um, so I wanna acknowledge that uh, Mike Shapak has entered the chat. Uh, Mike, can you unmute yourself and say hello?
There, that should be unmuted. Hello. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning, Mike.
Mike, uh, if you would, uh, we're gonna, we're not gonna go back and do all the questions we've done. But if you would go ahead and give us a quick two-minute opening statement and we'll get you in on the next question.
Thanks, Dan. I'll be glad to do that. Um. I'm, I'm Mike Shapak. I lived in Stone Mountain for about twelve years. I sort of have what some people will call a contrarian view. To the often repeated and often uh. Mentioned chivalrous of how wonderful a place Stone Mountain is and how our business district needs to be revamped. Um, first of all, I do have great admiration for the people that live here and because of that. Of the seven thousand or so people that live in Sun Mountain, why are we so focused? On less than fifty convenience businesses, which will never be a destination. We should always be serving the people here while our neighborhoods are falling into sinkholes. The, the infrastructure is being destroyed. The city is not. Catering as they should be to the people who are paying the taxes. Eighty percent or ninety percent of our revenue. Comes from the people who live here. Why are we always spending money on downtown? And not taking care of business in the neighborhoods? There are neighborhoods that outside walk. Gina, have you ever tried to walk in your neighborhood?
Excuse me. We're not gonna address, we're, we're not gonna address each other directly.
Coffee. Uh, but good morning, good morning and good luck.
Thank you. Uh. All right. Yeah, I, it just goes without saying that we're all here to have a civil discussion. Uh, we're not gonna personally attack each other. Um, so let's, let's keep it civil, please. Um, so the next question, uh, let's see where we were. Okay. Uh. Councilmember uh, Cox, uh, well, we'll start, excuse me, we'll start with Mike Shapak since he jumped in and we'll go back around. Uh, Mike Shapak, in many of your responses, not you specifically, but in all the Q and A responses, uh, there were. There were descriptions of what I would say are communication challenges for the city. Uh, Mike Shapak, if you're elected, how would you work to improve communication between the city and residents? You have two minutes.
Yes, thanks, Dan. And I'll try to be a little bit calmer. It was just the uh, the coffee surge this morning. Sorry, Gina, if you were offended.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
The uh, the main difference is. Everybody is focused on being so polite and so proper that the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is completely ignored. And again, it comes to serving the needs of the people that live there.
Believe we're having a, a technology.
A bedroom community. We do not have. Pardon? Uh, it is a bedroom community and we need to service the, the needs of the people that have made the biggest investment in their lives and have bought houses here. We need decent parks. We need sidewalks. We need streetlights. We need a non-collapsing infrastructure. And yet we keep coming back to the downtown. It's like the La Brea tar pits. It, it traps well-meaning people. And it eats them up. We ju- we've lost more businesses in the past two years than we have gained. The tattoo shop, most recently on Main Street, closed. They, they closed because they didn't get any business. I've heard we will increase foot traffic. My God, does Stone Mountain Main Street need more cars? Are we building this city for the convenience of other people's cars? And am I running on again or?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. I, I keep hearing the same campaign speech every, every year. And it's time for a change. It, it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked. People are moving out of Sun Mountain. It's time we made this a destination. Let's prioritize our schools.
Thank you.
Prioritize our living.
Thank you. Uh, Anita Bass, same question to you. A lot of the candidates' responses describe communication as an issue for the council. If you're elected, what will you do to improve communications amongst the Stone Mountain City Council?
Uh, you know, and communication is crucial. I mean, any type of relationship that you have, whether you're married, coworkers. City Council, Historical Preservation, you have to have that communication. Uh, I live in a city, so I understand exactly or live in the community countryside manner. So I understand, you know, some of the issues that people have. We weekly have or monthly have meetings with the community. We allow people to voice. What, what is the sum of concerns? Safety is an issue. Uh, sinkholes is an issue. Some of the things, so uh, as the community comes together and we hear the voices. Then there's a few of us that'll be the voices that can go back to the city council, go back and say, look, this is our issues. We need to develop a relationship with each entity in the city. We need to be able to have a relationship with the police department. We need to have a relationship with um, code enforcer. We need to have a relationship with DDA, HBC, the city council. We all need to know that it is not a me community, but it's a we community. And so we have to change our mindset. I am a, a servant leader. I, I believe that's what my path is in life and that we've gotta have people. As Mike said, that's not scared to avoid opinion. We're not gonna all agree, but the most important thing is to having a safe community for our children. Our children are future. And we as adults need to act like adults, address some issues, address some hardcore issues. And stop talking about things and be about activating. Let's activate some stuff.
Thank you.
What they've done, commu- communication and not a me community, but we, thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for the, for the connection issues, y'all. We're, we're doing our best. Um, we'll, we'll try to keep it as, as smooth as we can. Uh. Councilmember Cox, same question to you regarding communication. A lot of the answers, communication came up over and over again. If you were re-elected, uh, what will you do to better improve communication from the city of Stone Mountain, Stone Mountain City Council?
I think that um, an idea that is um, everybody, not everyone uses the social media. But I do think that more and more people, uh, if you don't utilize it, that person, oh, I saw this on it. And they spread the word by social media. We um, also talked about uh, newsletter. We talked about utilizing the um, city website. But moreover, opening my mouth and talking to people, but sharing all sides, not just the both sides. Because it's all usually, there are more than one side, one coming from the council. Um, and I think. That when we share the store, share, oh, what happened, tell it all. Don't just tell a piece of it. Tell it all. Um, and, and let the, the behind-the-scenes uh, information uh, flow so that people can get a better gauge on what's taking place. Um, the community roundtables has just been um, to me, uh, something I mentioned when our city manager came on, which was a star, a roundtable. And that allowed three, four different events to take place where people came out. Some people complained that. Oh, it wasn't a gripe session. Well, we get enough of that. Come with some solutions when you come. And that way it's like, it's, it's not always um, a, a situation where it's tense. Uh, it, it is, is a, a giving a chart, a chance for people to say, okay, wow, I didn't think about that once again. And hearing other people uh, from different areas of the town, the city, speak on uh, what matters to them.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna start this next question with Anita Bass. Uh, Anita. As you know, Stone Mountain's biggest tourist attraction, the park, isn't in city limits. What should Stone Mountain Village do to attract more visitors to the city? Uh, two minutes.
Right. Again, we talked about that. We've got to um, do some revitalization. I, I'm big about going to other areas. I would talk with Avondale City Council. I would go over to Tucker. I would go down to Decatur. I would definitely. Integrate with other communities that has success. And so I'm not too proud to go over and say, hey, tell me about your story. How did you get there? Because you know what? It's not so much that we are so prideful or we uh, don't know what we need to do. But we also need to see the success stories of other communities. So I think that once we do that, because it's important that when I, like again, I worked at Stone Mountain. So you have to go through the city, but people stop in the city. If I worked at Stone Mountain, I may wanna stop in the city to get something to eat. Or it's something I wanna shop. I don't want to go down to Avondale to go shop. I don't wanna go over to Tucker anywhere else to go get food. I want to support our local businesses, our homegrown business here. So I think the revitalization, the incentive for new businesses. And also beautifying the city. I lived in Germany. That's smaller footprints as far as the city and it didn't take a lot. It's the beautification. It is the heart of the people to make sure that our place is a place that you wanna stop. You wanna eat, you wanna chat with friends or meet new friends. So I think that that'll be a big impact. Once we do some big revitalization and improvement in the city. It's welcoming and people will sit and stay. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Cox, same question to you. Uh, Stone Mountain's biggest tourist attraction is the park, which is not in city limits. What should Stone Mountain Village do to attract more visitors to the city? You have two minutes.
Um, attracting more businesses to the city, I would think that I, I try to go back to some of those people who. Put in applications, who had talked to downtown development.
Just, just so I'm clear that, I, I'm sorry to cut you off. I, I, I meant visitors, not businesses, just.
Visitors. Yes. Okay. Business. Yeah, okay. Wait, wait, but to, to bring them toward more businesses. Be, those people that are coming through the town, um, yes, the foot traffic goes through and a lot of people use our streets to go into the, the park. Um, but I would look at what other businesses wanted to start here and find out what made you not put your business here. And then those businesses would say, okay, well, it was this reason why. I would also do a. Public survey, asking the people, what, what businesses would you like to see? Oh, would you like to see a seafood stand? And then kind of see if development could reach out to some uh, company or some, some investors that would like to start. That particular um, uh, type of business. So what the people wanna see, I think, goes a long way. But um, more, more importantly, we'd have to look and see, all right, we've got some property owners now and say to them. Hey, we've got some ordinances down here that say, right now, you're not showing us that you're trying to help with the livelihood on our Main Street. And what can we do to encourage you um, to, to do some things? And, and if, if that meeting at the table doesn't work, then we try again. Another directive, but I'm not for taking anybody's property, but I need for them to see. That they're not helping, more of impeding the pro- the progress of Main Street.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Shapak, same question to you. Stone Mountain's biggest tourist attraction is the park, which of course is not in the city limits. What should the city do to attract more visitors to Stone Mountain Village? You have two minutes.
Uh, Dan, I'm gonna kind of turn that question around. Why should we attract visitors? Why should we work to get other people here? What are the tourist attractions, ladies? There's the miniature chair museum, but it's pretty much closed. And there are restaurants here, but I have heard, I, I will good authority. That you can eat dinner in many places and lunch in many. Bring visitors and why would we want more people on our streets for their convenience? What is the benefit to the city? And please, I'm tired of the old chivalry that will increase property values and will decrease your property taxes. That's a myth. And I challenge anyone to sit down with me and show me on paper how business taxes, since we don't have any city taxes. Benefit this city. The truth of the matter is we always say the same thing. We will encourage business. Does that mean we're gonna fire poor Kayla as head of DDA because she's not doing her job? Does that mean we're going to fire poor Kayla as head of DDA because she's not doing her job? No, the woman works. She's qualified. She's skilled. That is not the answer. Dan, I'm sorry, but that question is kind of a red herring. If we make Stone Mountain a great place to live, great people will live here. People will rise to the equation. They will stand up and they will engage in civic engagement, which is something we don't have right now. I'm for the people that live here. I'm for the people that put their money and their life on the line and want a good place to live, not to live at Disney World, not to live at, at be a tourist attraction. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, just, just to follow up on that, in your opening remarks or responses to one of the questions, you mentioned that disproportionate share of the tax burden in revenue, uh, is shouldered by the residents of Stone Mountain. So if you're not in favor of bringing more visitors to the city, which would presumably bring revenue in the form of sales taxes and hotel motel tax, how would you diversify the revenue if you're, uh, not, you know, then we'll lead off into another question. But, um, if you're not interested in having more visitors in the city, how would you diversify the revenue so it's not as much of a burden on the homeowners?
Uh, Dan, thank you. First of all, Stone Mountain has, and this might be a shock to some of the people here, um, a very big problem with absentee landlords and renters of houses. During the white flight of the nineteen nineties and the, the year two thousand, many of our older residents left their homes and those are now rental properties. The last report by PON showed that we have more than fifty-one percent of our homes as rental properties. In Sherman Town, Gina can testify to this, and she knows, uh, it, the ratio is much higher. Disproportionately blacks are affected by non-home ownership at a much greater rate. We've done nothing to address that. Yet many of these people that are absentee landlords are still claiming homestead exemptions and are still claiming false, low tax rates that have not been investigated. The city should check and just verify that people own the homes they did and that they are still properly receiving the benefits. Both native, if they are, if they are not entitled to, to homestead discounts, take them away. If they are entitled to the city's additional discount, let's give it to them. Let's be fair to the people who live here, not to the people who invest here and the people who have property, want to sell it. Um, most cities, most bedroom communities, which we are, receive much of their money from property taxes as we should. We do not have a city sales tax. We receive a pro rata based on the population of the entire DeKalb County, a pro rata share of any sales in Stone Mountain. That means we receive, a, a, as we know from our latest SPOSS, the lowest percentage of any municipality, and it's not going to be anymore. We receive maybe one ten thousand.
Thank you. That's two minutes. Uh, Councilmember Cox, question to you. Um, what should Stone Mountain do to diversify its revenue stream?
I think going back to review past years, uh, to see where the greater amount came in, uh, then going back and then reviewing, um, with its citizens, um, and businesses again. I, I, me, my take on it is commercial revenue is going to bring you the greater. And when people come in and see, oh, okay, well, that is a place that I can go play. Let, then let me go and see if there is a place that I can live there in that city. So I think that drawing factor, it may not be a Disney world, but it does bring a family, uh, sense of community. So, um, I think that would be helpful to. So it, it's not going to be, um, something that's going to be fixed overnight, but I think with careful, um, assessment of the books to help to diversify its income. Number one is going to be our, our bringing the, the businesses up. I do believe that. And chain, and, and giving a choice of, of, you know, more than what we offer. But I think it's on its way. I'm not going, I don't, I don't see, uh, everything lost. I don't. I see it very positive.
Thank you. Uh, Anita Bass, question to you. Same question. What should Stone Mountain do to diversify its revenue stream?
Oh, I think some of the things is to make sure that we do offer some incentives for new businesses. Encourage people that live locally. I, I was asked the other day, you know, do you encourage local businesses to come into the city and to be a partaker? And I said, absolutely. That we have some creative people. I mean, being on the historical preservation committee, I've seen some amazing younger people coming in with some amazing ideas, you know? And if we don't tap into some of the more wiser, older experience and some that are young, and we work together and create, I mean, we could do parking meters. We can did, as Gina mentioned, we could bring in more incentives for new businesses. We can just really, um, again, I, I, again, I can't stress this enough. You've got to go see what are the cities with the same, uh, budget, same footprint. What are you doing? What is your success rating? And stop being so like, oh, we're going to do it. We've got it together. No, we don't have it together. Stone Mountain, if we're not careful, will be a ghost town. And again, I've been here for thirty-one years and I've seen it blossom. I've seen it be beautiful. I've seen it be so diverse with so many people. And then I've, I've also seen it become a ghost town. And I've seen it just drundle down. So if we don't get a hold of the city, if we don't begin to encourage, motivate, incentivize, and bring those people in and want to come in, we will continue to go down. But I believe there are people in this city that have a heart to see a change. And there's going to be people that are going to get up off of their do-nothing selves and begin to want to do some things to make this a better place and a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cox, we'll start this question with you. Uh, the Stone Mountain City Council recently voted to give itself a raise. Do you agree with that decision? Two minutes.
I did not vote for the raise.
So that would be enough. Um, what, can you, can you elaborate a little bit about why you, why you disagreed with that decision?
Um, let me, let's, yeah, let me, let's go back. When I got on to council, my perspective of council is a body people. Thinking that person one would have an idea, would go over to person five and share the idea, and maybe person four would say, okay, wow. And those three people would bring this discussion up to the rest of the body. And the rest of the body would say, hey, um, okay, good, but why this or change this and then make something happen? Well, a great deal of the time, we did not have that blend. And so going to the, the citizens and saying, hey, you know what? We spent some time on great discussions and or not. And, um, the, to, to, to produce what the citizens want to see, I just didn't feel like it, it merits a raise. And that's why I voted against it. Um, and so first of all, I, when I got on to council, I didn't know you got paid. So I work for your living. So, and, and again, we started talking about, uh, servitude and being, uh, a community worker. Much, much of that, what you do, you, you're giving back, you know? So it's not, you're getting paid for everything. You go because you know that that's where you live. You lay your head down. You say, oh, okay, I know I can close my, both my eyes and rest. And I've done what I need to do. So I, I didn't vote for the raise. So I hate when they say y'all. That phrase does not apply to me. I didn't vote for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Councilmember Cox. Uh, Mike Shapak, question to you. Council recently voted to give itself a raise. It was not a unanimous vote, I will note, uh, for the record. Um, what is your opinion of that decision? You have two minutes.
Well, Dan, I think it stinks. And let me go ahead and state right now, I have campaign literature that I passed out at the city council meeting. Upon great personal risk, they might actually take me out of the meeting for being rude. But, uh, in that literature, I stated that if I am elected, dollars, which is the amount with inflation determined by the consumer price index, that two thousand eight dollars are worth today. And if the city will not let me refuse that amount, I will donate it every month to a charity that either benefits children or benefits Stone Mountain. I already have three people that have come to me and have committed for the first three. Uh, I'm sorry, but all the discussion, why am I alone here? Why am I the only person that says I disagree, but this is what I will do? Everybody talks about communication and about chatting and about how it's all one city council and we've got to work together. Yet they throw each other under the bus. The, the very first time that something goes that makes them look unpopular. Where's the loyalty to the team? Where's the commitment? Where's the integrity? Where is the focus of this city council? If it's not on self-improvement, self-aggrandizing, and everybody's own little agenda, what's left for the people? That's what I think about the decision, Dan. And it's not positive, but it's very typical of how our city council has operated, at least for the past twelve years. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Anita Bass, same question to you. Uh, the city council in, in a vote that was not unanimous, I will note again, uh, voted to give itself a raise. Uh, what is your opinion of that? Do you agree or disagree with it? Two minutes.
Uh, I disagree with that substantial raise amount. I think that it was noted before they had not had a raise in fifteen years. So shame on those that were there before and didn't feel as if that they could at least got a, a cost of living raise. Uh, my opinion on that is that when you get a raise, you deserve it. Uh, you have done some work and your work is proven. You got a track record. And once you can do that, I don't think a community would have a problem with you getting a percentage rate. I think that it should have been done in increments so that you come and you say, okay, we've done this amount. We just think that we deserve an additional two hundred dollars. Okay, great. We applaud you for that. And then after six months to a year, you come back and you say, we've accomplished this during this time period. Again, I don't think people would have a problem with giving you increments of raises. However, a lot of the people that were in the community were very disgruntled, very heartbroken, thought it was horrible, did not agree a hundred percent. So the city council maybe should have reconvened and said, you know what? Let us go back and do some introspective. Let's make sure that if we are asking for any type of raise, then we have a proven record that we are here to serve the community. And what the community says about it is important. If they didn't agree, we're not voting in ourselves, the community. The people vote us in. We are servant leaders or should be for the voice of the community. And if they didn't think we deserve or they deserved a mayor raise, then they needed to take that into consideration, swallow that pride and say, you know what? We'll change our mind. We'll take a small increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's shift gears real quick. Uh, everybody running for local office has a diverse skill set. They have, uh, interesting day jobs. Uh, starting with Mike Shapak. Mike, what skills do you use in your professional life, day job, that you think will be beneficial if you are elected as a member of the city council?
Damn, thank you. Um, number one, unlike, uh, my knowledge of the, of the, of the other candidates that are running for this position, I have always been a self-employed skilled tradesperson. I ran an electrical company for over forty years. Um, one becomes when you have to depend on your own sweat and your own ability to, to bring in an income, you become very goal-centered and you become very solutions-centered. It has been my job to either sink or swim. It has been my job to solve the problem. That's a lot different than the attitude of people that work for a hierarchy and have a place in the chain of command. In, in fact, it's often been said that if you're anything other than the lead sled dog, the view never changes. Um, there's some truth to that. For good or for bad, I look for solutions. Not just for what is politically acceptable, not for what people want to hear. Uh, I, I am very guilty of cutting through a lot of the obscene equus finiary and bowing and not knowing the procedures. And I say what I think. And if somebody can show me I'm wrong, I say, thank you. You're correct. I was wrong. So it's not an ego-driven solution, goal-driven, and that's what Stone Mountain lacks. We have no goals. We have no long-term solutions. Look at our schools. Uh, the schools have constantly gone downhill. People live somewhere where their children can go to school and get a decent education. We're more worried about businesses where they can buy crystals and up until recently get a tattoo and go see miniature chairs than we are worried about the fact that Stone Mountain Elementary School is one of the lowest-rated schools in the DeKalb County system.
Thank you. Uh, Anita Bass, same question to you. Uh, what skills do you use in your day job, professional life that you think will be helpful to you if you are elected to city council? You have two minutes.
Okay, the skill set that I can bring to the city council is definitely a leadership skill. I think that, uh, over twenty years of volunteer service in, throughout the community, not just in Stone Mountain, but in Clarkson Community and Lightonia, uh, I've been able to lead a lot of different initiatives. And in that capacity, I'm able to kind of navigate and activate very quickly. If there's an issue, I'm quick on my feet in terms of making a resolution. But I'm also, uh, discerning enough to know that on a team, we all bring something different. Gina, Mike, myself, we're all different. And so we all have something gifted and different that we can bring. So I think that one of my skillset is definitely acknowledging that gift in Mike, that acknowledging that gift in Gina and knowing how to navigate and position them where they'll be most effective. Also things that I'm an activator. So that when it's a situation, I'm not sitting around saying, what are we going to do? I'm like, okay, let's take the lead. I'll take the lead on that. And I'm not a person that will try to please the crowd. I'm not going to go along with something that I think from an integrity's perspective. I want to be transparent. I'm very transparent. And I think that integrity and transparency and grit is something that I can bring. I live. I think that it's something that I live. I think it was something deposited in me such a long time ago that as an adult person, I understand the beauty of all of us being different, gifted and blessed, and how we can work together as a whole to make the city a better place.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cox, same to you. Uh, maybe worded a little differently since you're currently serving, but what skills do you use in your day job that you feel, uh, help you, uh, as you serve on the Stone Mountain City Council and would help you if you are reelected?
Well, the communication, I think, is key. Um, uh, in my line of work, sometimes the topics are tough. Um, to bring to parents. And so I look at that as being, um, the, the, uh, clients, the, the being the parents, um, and the citizens being the, the clients. So the topics may need to be, um, put into, um, language where everybody can understand it. Uh, here is our goal and what we need to do to, to get to that goal. Um, that way the, the parents know that throughout the year, we're focusing on this strategy. Um, the children, um, how they perform, they have to be an active part into, um, the goal setting, the objectives that we set for them. And I look at that as being the citizens, uh, being an active participant in that. Um, we keep talking about the school, but that's a DeKalb County issue in which we are the city of Stone Mountain. Um, that doesn't mean that we can't adopt the school in some, for some aspect of it. Um, there, there is much that goes into, uh, to formulate when a school is a failing, uh, organization. Uh, it could be something, uh, three factors, uh, special students with special needs, uh, free and reduced meals, um, socioeconomic issues that are compounded into that making that school, um, a failing school. And I understand that that affects our, um, the people's desire to purchase a home. But as a teacher, I work in a team and, um, we use that. This, this teacher may have this brainstorming idea, that teacher may have it, and we all come together to complete a plan. And that is the way we go forward in making things better for the benefit of all those are that, um, are reaping the benefits and those are that are helping implement and putting the, um, plan into motion.
Thank you. Uh, and with that, we are at the end of our, a lot of time for this forum. I'm going to give each candidate two minutes to make a closing statement. We're going to start with Anita Bass, then we're going to go to Mike Shapak, and then, uh, we're going to end with Councilmember Cox. Uh, so, uh, Anita Bass, you have two minutes to make your closing statement.
You know, first of all, thank you, Decaturist and Dan, for giving us the opportunity to really use this platform to share what's in our heart. Um, if I'm elected the council, uh, member for post one, I think that, um, I would be a fresh, a, a breath, a breath, a breath of Um, if I'm elected the council uh, member for post one, I think that um, I would be a fresh, a, a breath of fresh, a breath of fresh air to really um, encourage people to unify the city. Hopefully um, my time as far as being in the community, volunteerism will make an impact on how the city begins to turn. I think there is a, 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 a new wave coming. I think that there's things that are coming down the pipe and I would hope that I would be that voice that could help steer the helm that way. I think that we are a, a place in history that things need to change in Stone Mountain. I think that it has the, the landscape, it has the potential to be something that will be in awe, that people will just come in and say, wow, I saw it when it was this. And I hope that I could be that voice that could help turn that helm around and be a, 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 a light in an area that seems almost dark. It, we need some light in that area and I hope that I could be that light and voice and a person that would represent the community and bring all the community people that want to come to the table to come sit at the table, eat at the table, partake in the table. And also your ideas will be implemented, not talked about, but activated and implemented at the table and for the community. Unity for our community is what we stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Shape Hawk, you have two minutes to make a closing statement.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, I, I, again, I don't have uh, nice, kind, wonderful, serp-y words to throw home. Uh, you know, when I was a young kid, I went to the store and that back then, the bakeries would have copies of birthday cakes up on the uh, uh, the counter. And I was three years old and I grabbed one of those cakes and I bit into it, only to find out that underneath the icing was styrofoam. It was a beautiful looking cake, but you shouldn't nice, but they're not what really counts. What counts is the substance, what counts is what really appears. We've heard the same campaign slogans for at least twenty years. I, how beautiful Stone Mountain is, how we're gonna revitalize the district, yet nobody has done it. We never hold our city council to their record. What have you done? What have you accomplished? And to their credit, they're smart enough not to run on their record. They never talk about what they've accomplished. They talk about what they will accomplish and how wonderful it is and what we need is teamwork and what we need is cleaning up and what we need is sprucing up and the future will be bright. Dan, I'm a hands-on person. I'm not on any committees, I'm not on any groups, I'm not on any leadership initiatives. But when it comes to cleaning up Main Street, I was there pulling out weeds and planting plants. When it comes to building a park, I was there mixing up concrete. And when it comes to actually doing hands-on, it makes a difference, like picking up trash along Ridge Avenue. Um, I'm the only one that shows up to those. It matters. Doing the actual work instead of talking a good game is what is going to make this a better city. I'm for empowerment, I'm for the people that live here.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cox, uh, last word, uh, closing statement, two minutes.
All right, thank you. Um, uh, go quickly. Um, it, it, uh, we started off by telling you that we appreciate first you all having this and I thank you for setting the tone in which we must all remember that we are all a part of the city. I'm gonna get off of, uh, take off of Ms. Bass. It is not my city, it is our city. And so with that, she's, uh, uh, we, we are gonna put hands to hands together. And I have gone to cleanups, I have gone to uh, to roundtables to listen to discussions. I pulled weeds as well and I put flowers in. So uh, praise God for that. Uh, my constituents will find that I continue to be the level-headed uh, uh, council person that is operating in honesty, peacefulness and unity as well. Working together, uh, looking to speak to people, not just um, during election time. But most of my neighbors will tell you, my front yard conversation continues. And that I'm taking what they say back to heart. When I hear the people speak, I act on it. So I am not afraid of the tough subjects, I am not afraid of anything. I want the people to understand that we stand together and we stand for a better si- a Stone Mountain than what we are saying that is dead and downtrodden. And it's not. We know that there is great potential, but everybody should have a place and will have a place in my, my term.
Thank you. Uh, that is the conclusion of our, our forum. I will uh, note on a, on a personal matter um, that a, a few of you have mentioned Avondale and what has happened over there in the last few years. And I, and I thought I should point out that we started covering Avondale uh, ten years ago. And Avondale had a lot of the problems that, that Stone Mountain faces today. And what made a difference was good government. And more importantly, good people stepping up to run and be a part of that government. And I would like to thank everyone here uh, for your interest in being a part of the process and, and serving. Uh, it is a, it is an imposition on your time and we do acknowledge that and we thank you for it. Um, this is the Decaturish dot com Stone Mountain City Council Forum. Uh, this was for post one and a few minutes, if you're watching this on Twitch, the count, post two candidates, we're gonna send you the link, sit tight. We're gonna send it to you right now. Uh, this is the Decaturish dot com forum. All of our coverage. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm rocking and rolling today, y'all. Uh, so uh, all of our elections coverage can be found at Decaturishvotes dot com. That's Decatur with an I-S-H at the end of it, votes dot com. Elections are November seventh, early voting is October sixteenth. If you need to figure out what's on your ballot, go to the Secretary of State's My Voter page. If you are watching this and you appreciate the opportunity that we have provided for you to hear from these candidates, please visit supportyourlocalnews dot com and consider contributing to our fall fundraiser. Elections are an added cost to what we do. Uh, they're on top of what we spend to get these city council meetings covered. Uh, we really need your support this year. So if you're watching this and you appreciated us doing this, please visit support your local news right now and make a contribution today. With that, we're gonna move on to the next forum. I thank you all so, so much for attending. Uh, and best luck to everyone, uh, and everyone, please, please vote in uh, the November seventh election. And uh, we'll be on with the next forum soon. Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Mike and Gina, have a good one. Hi, Dan, thank you. Okay.